Hey, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Thursday evening, December 3rd, 2020. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. I would ask at this time that if there is anyone who is recording tonight's meeting, to please identify yourself by either using the raised hand function or by identifying, unmuting yourself and identifying that you are recording. Okay, seeing none, the Board of Selectmen, we were not anticipating to meet this week, but an opportunity has arisen in the town and thanks to some great teamwork by our Town Administrator, our Assistant Town Administrator, members of Public Safety and our Executive Health Officer, we have an opportunity to consider establishing a COVID-19 testing site here in Hingham. We are joined and we welcome Mr. Jackson Stone to our meeting this evening. In terms of how this will work, Tom, I'm going to hand it over to you and ask if you could walk the Board and the public through what is being proposed this evening. I will let my colleagues and members of the public and the press who are on the call know that we also have counsel for the town on the line. We have our Town Engineer, J.R. Frye. We have members of Public Safety who have been also working on this. After a kind of a brief presentation about this opportunity, we'll open it up to questions and comments from the Board and then we will open it up to questions and comments from the public. I would also just note at the start, I see we have representatives from the Patriot Ledger and the Hingham Anchor. We thank you for joining us tonight and I would also let you know that if tomorrow you have any additional questions, Town Administration would be happy to speak with you to answer any questions that you have. So, Tom, with that, I think I'll turn it over to you if you want to give us an overview and bring people in as you see the best way to bring this forward.
Sure, thank you. So, as many people have read and seen, unfortunately, COVID-19 is spiking all across the country, but also here at home in Plymouth County and even in Hingham. And we're also anecdotally and personally realizing and recognizing that testing facilities are overburdened. There are too few and they're overburdened, the ones they have. And we're hearing from our constituents and others about a difficult difficulty in terms of being able to schedule tests and getting reasonable turnaround with the tests when they're able to get them. This is an initiative that in large part was brought to me in my office through Selectmen Fisher, who's been working diligently with us to try to identify the best possible solutions and I think we've done that. We have, joining us here tonight, in order to bring a testing center to Hingham, we have available here tonight with us a gentleman named Jackson Stone, who is a Hingham resident, who is bringing, successfully bringing, public-based testing to the Town of Brookline and other places. I know that they're working to try to help the state in general to stem the tide by offering these services. So, we're appreciative of their, of Jackson's abilities and the company's abilities and willingness to work with us. I think that it's important to note, well, we'll go through a lot of the details, I think, and tease out a lot of the facts that the general public would need to know in terms of how this program will work. But I guess I'll leave it there and let the conversation kind of take its path. But I just wanted to express my thanks to both Joe and Jackson and, you know, to try to, working so diligently with all of us to try to get this done and to get it done fairly for the town. So, thank you.
So, Tom, at this point, how would you like to proceed?
So, I would suggest that we turn it over to Jackson to describe the program, what, how he sees it, you know, playing out. We can, at that point, turn it over to Sergeant Kilroy and J.R. Frye to talk us, walk through some of the logistics of how this will work in Hingham and then open it for questions.
Terrific. So, Mr. Stone, welcome. And I would just note for the record that you're here as a representative of Empathy, which is a limited liability corporation, but that this is a business that actually specializes in COVID testing. So, welcome and, you know, perhaps you could give the Board and an overview, the Board and the public, an overview of the testing program that you would propose to be established here in Hingham.
I'd be happy to. And I just want to take a second and say, you know, it's been a pleasure to work with you, Tom and Joe and the rest of you here that we've been, you know, forming this program with and I appreciate you having me. So, the, you know, Empathy is a company that's focused, as you say, on COVID testing and on, you know, specifically on responding to the public need by partnering with different organizations and municipalities to help us, to help create testing sites together that don't create a huge or untenable economic burden on the town while also providing high-quality testing through good partner labs such as ours, the Boston Heart Diagnostics Group in Framingham and the Broad Institute. And to do so in a form of public-private partnership where the overall cost is dependent on the number of individuals that come through the testing site and the more, in broad strokes, the more people that utilize it, the, there's an opportunity to make the day-to-day cost free if that's, if that's high enough or lower cost if it's an intermediate amount. The way that the testing sites work, as it works in Brookline and as it would work here, is that we scope out a location, which we've done. That would be suitable both in terms of public access and also in terms of safety. So, for us, you know, in considering the different factors that make a site safe, it would be a big enough space that, you know, people aren't going to encounter basic hazards such as walking into the road and inadvertently with the, with the knowledge in mind that there's going to be a lot of people potentially coming through at a given, at a given moment and with a high volume of people. You just want to make sure that the site infrastructure is set up so that the throughput can proceed in an orderly fashion away from public hazard. And perhaps more importantly, the ventilation. So, that's the site, the scoping out the site. And then what we'll actually set up inside a particular location is something as simple as a few tables and chairs and medical staff, nurses, medical assistants or phlebotomists that will conduct registration and intake. So, get basic information from a patient or resident of the town or someone that's looking to get tested, recorded in our system, provided full collection to another staff member who will then, with the patient and everybody, you know, on our side again is in personal protective equipment, full PPE, would then swap the patient, deposit it in the tube, store the samples in a refrigerated environment that we provide, I mean, a cooler and/or cooler. And then, you know, one to two times a day, transport that to a lab and then return the results to the patients so that, and notify the state in the case of any positives and make positive contact with the patient for any positives so as to enable them to quarantine and for the state to follow up and do contact tracing. That's a general overview and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah. Jackson, maybe I'll just ask a couple of questions to flush out some of the details for the benefit of the press and the public. First of all, the location, the proposed location that we are going to be using is actually 308 Cushing Street, which is the old Hingham Light Plant. That is a facility that is vacant. It has the necessary, it is of a suitable size and it meets your specifications. It also has a very large parking lot so that, so that it can accommodate people. In terms of, first of all, there are different types of COVID tests that are out there. Which type of COVID test will people who use this service receive?
The modality we'll use is PCR-based testing. So, this is the gold standard, so to speak. And we, again, we work with the Broad Institute and Boston Heart Diagnostics and typically those results would come back next day or the day after.
And how will, if someone were to get a test, how would they receive their testing report? Would that be sent to them electronically? Would it be in the U.S. mail?
It would be sent to them electronically. So, they would, they would receive an email after giving one of our staff members onsite an email for that purpose. And if they were positive, they would also receive a phone call as soon as it was practical after we received the result. One of the clinicians will follow up with the patient directly to ensure that we get the positive notified very quickly.
And for someone who would like to be tested at this facility, what are the payment arrangements?
So, for those who are asymptomatic, so they're not experiencing symptoms at the time of testing, they'll be asked that onsite and then the charge will be $140 per participant, per test. And for those who are symptomatic, you know, we have the ability to partner with our lab to bill their insurance and that will be provided at no charge.
And will, will people being tested, will symptomatic and asymptomatic people be separated at the testing facility?
So, we'll separate everyone at the testing facility by using good sort of social distancing practices. You know, we talked, Tom Mayo and I talked and so did Officer Kilroy and I. There's really, as you mentioned, ample space in the municipal lighting plant to be able to keep people far apart regardless of if they're symptomatic or not.
Okay. And what is the daily, you're proposing the hours of operation are going to be, I believe, from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. What is the daily testing capacity for seven hours of testing?
So, you know, what we've seen on an eight to nine-hour day is at maximum, let's say in the 200 test range or a little bit over, you know, for seven hours, you'd scale that down ratably. So, somewhere above 150 at maximum.
Okay. So, that's about 20 or 25 per hour?
That's correct.
Okay. And I know something that, and I want to thank my colleague, Joe Fisher, for really spearheading this on behalf of the Board. I know one of the important considerations for Joe as well as for Bill and I was also the ability to schedule appointments and the ability for, and just, you know, maybe if you could just describe how that will work. And I know that there's also, it is being proposed that Hingham residents and Hingham Town employees receive preferential scheduling at certain times during the day. So, could you just describe that a little, please?
I'm happy to. So, the way people will be able to schedule is on our website at empathy.org/schedule. And I'll take an opportunity just to note at that first mention of the website that our name starts with an M, so you skip the E. So, in any press releases, it's pretty important that everybody knows that because people can head to the wrong place. But they head to empathy.org/schedule and it will ask where you're getting tested and, you know, if it's this site, people would select Hingham. And then there'd be another question as to whether or not it was a Hingham resident or a non-resident and we would display additional time slots for those that self-identify as a Hingham resident. You know, in the proposal, I believe right now, that would be in the morning before 10:00 a.m. You know, where, where, you know, Tom Mayo and Joe Fisher and I have been in communication about the schedule in general and just as we opened the site, being able to adjust based on the demand to accommodate, you know, the overall need and be flexible. But that's the plan as of right now, to have additional slots in that morning window for Hingham residents.
And it would also include Town employees, is my understanding?
That's correct.
Yeah. And, you know, that maybe leads me to another question. The testing facility appointments can be made, but my understanding as well is that it will have the ability to accommodate walk-up customers?
That's correct. Yeah, we do take walk-ins. So, on that note, so those who are scheduled will be seen in preference to those who walk up. So, if you have a scheduled appointment, you'll be seen prior to someone who walks in, but we also do accommodate walk-ins.
And, Tom, maybe before turning it over to J.R. and Officer Kilroy to talk about the traffic, perhaps you could just briefly describe in terms of the, you know, the expenses with the town and CARES Act reimbursement, how long we see this testing program taking place? You know, what sort of financial responsibility the Town of Hingham will be taking on?
Sure, thank you, Mary. So, the, we're anticipating the contract running, I think we have in the contract through March 1st. So, for a few months anyway, we'll, it'll be data-driven, right? So, if, you know, we're getting 70, 80, 90 tests a day, then we'll probably want to continue it up in that, in that timeframe. If it's slowed down in the interim, maybe we back, we back down as appropriate. So, it'll be data-driven how long the contract runs for. As far as the financials, the town will be, will be backstopping some of, some of Empathy's risk by, by funding the, through the contract, by funding through-town resources, an amount that will, that will secure the company's upfront costs. So, in other words, there, if we have fewer than, I believe the number is 25, fewer than 25 asymptomatic tests in any given day, then the town will, will be on the hook for as much as $4,000 for that day. If there is between 70 and 25 tests per day, asymptomatic tests per day, then that, then that number drops to $1,800 per day. If there are over 70 asymptomatic tests per day, which Mr. Stone has informed us is a regular occurrence in Brookline, then it would be at no cost to the town. In other words, they wouldn't have to have their upfront costs backstopped at that point because there was enough revenue coming in through the asymptomatic test to cover that cost.
And, Tom, am I correct that any, any sort of startup, startup or daily costs that the Town of Hingham might incur would be eligible for CARES Act reimbursement through December 30th?
So, the initial upfront cost will be as well as any daily costs running through a time period by which we can bill or he can invoice us and we can pay it up to and potentially including December 30th, though, you know, the December 30th cost would take some magic to actually get those reimbursed.
Yeah. So, yeah, I would, I would just remind the public that Hingham has access to up to $3.6 million in CARES Act funding. And at this stage in the game, we have the capacity to, you know, to submit these for reimbursement, just as with our school reopening costs, with our town costs, any COVID-related expenses incurred after December 30th at this point are not eligible. But we are still hopeful that action will be taken at the federal level to either extend that deadline or to make additional funds available. So, it's another thing the town continues to, continues to watch.
Mary, do you mind if I just, just say a couple of other things that came up during the conversation? As I knew this would, right? The conversation draws all the information. So, you had asked about COVID protocols being in place to ensure safety in terms of participants coming in and, they're not patients, Jackson. I keep struggling with what to call people coming up to the window.
We all, we all have that.
So, participants coming in. The, you know, we work very closely as we do with all things COVID with our Executive Health Officer, Susan Sarni, who's on the call tonight, with helping us to make sure we can ensure the public safety. And one of the things that she and I talked about today is, she asked that instead of six feet where there's the potential for having positive patients, positive people here at the, onsite, we want to spread those marks out to keep people as separated as possible. So, we're going to put marks 10 feet apart instead of six. It's important to note also, one of the reasons we're using 308 Cushing Street is because of the design of what used to be the light plant has large garage bays on either end of the building. And by opening those two garage bays, they can, the staff can and participants can, can interact in a semi-heated, albeit very well-ventilated with garage doors open space. And, and that greatly reduces the risks by maintaining proper ventilation. It's right about now that I look over at Susan nervously and say, did I say something wrong or did I miss something? So, Susan, please just jump in if that's the case or if you have something that you feel needs to be added. But, so that's, so that, you know, proper social distancing, mask-wearing at all times onsite. When you're out of your car, you have to have a mask on the entire time you're onsite, in the parking lot, in the facility and right back into your car. So, we're asking that people comply with that. We will have police details onsite to help coordinate both foot traffic to the extent that's needed and of course, traffic on 308, excuse me, on Cushing Street, again, should that be needed. But Sergeant Kilroy can certainly speak to that better than I can.
Yeah. And before turning it over to Sergeant Kilroy and J.R., I would just also note from the, from the documents that the Board received, that, that all ages, including children, are eligible for testing. So, okay, I think at this point, Town Engineer, J.R. Frye and Sergeant Kilroy from the Traffic Division, I know both of you have been working closely with this team to, on a traffic plan and kind of a flow. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to both of you to just, you know, give, give some highlights as to the traffic plan and any other considerations that you would like to add. And I believe Michelle has made all of you co-hosts, so I don't know if somebody's going to share their screen.
Sergeant Kilroy, if you'd like to share that, that screen or perhaps Michelle, you or I could do that with the, with the plan, if you have it.
Yes, I believe, thank you, sir. J.R., I believe has the, he has worked on a overhead schematic.
How's that?
Looks good.
Thank you.
So, basically, at the southern side of the property, and this is how the parking lot is currently situated regardless, at the southern side of the property, you have an entryway for vehicles. They can make their way to a couple parallel parking stalls and then an additional 41 regular parking spaces. I've outlined two handicap spaces, but I didn't actually have a chance to double-check what the minimum requirement would be from the Architectural Board. So, there may need to be one more space. But really, as you can see, this should be more than sufficient parking. At the north side of that parking lot, there is an exit only for the vehicles. So, you have safe ingress and egress from the property and it meets what currently exists there. For the actual patients or people getting tested, you've got, I believe that they kind of had a triage tent or registration tent that they were proposing to use, 10 by 20. They may not need that because there's so much space inside the actual garage that they could probably do any of their registration or triage inside that space, but I've got it on there just in case. And generally, we would have people come in on that side of the building. So, this would be at the rear of the garage. They'd enter, get registered, they'd be able to walk over to the medical tables, have their, give their sample or test taken and then they could exit out the rear and back into the parking lot over the sidewalk there. This entire area here, we would cone off and make it clear that it's for pedestrian use only. We don't want to get any cross-traffic or people just trying to pull up in front of a building when you've got a fair number of people that may be walking around out And then lastly, and it may be something that we can either coordinate with the police details that are onsite or with the medical personnel, if someone is handicapped, we may have to either guide them back in through the vehicle egress for handicap accessibility or bring them back through this, through the rear door. That may depend on foot traffic. I think we were also talking about possibly extending the edge. Right now, there's a step on this to get up onto the sidewalk. There's a possibility that we could just ramp that down and have a regular 5% grade wheelchair ramp that would allow full access for all users.
Thank you. And Sergeant Kilroy, what, anything that you would like to add?
I know, ma'am, the, like I said, J.R. pretty much covered it. That's the plan that we have come up with. We can obviously adapt as needed. We feel as though, after speaking with Jackson, that the parking we've provided is adequate. We originally had toyed with a couple of ideas, but then we talked also about potential for backup or maybe vehicles having to queue in reducing any type of backup on Cushing Street. Therefore, as you can see from the diagram, we left the parking against the fence on the, it looks like the easternmost side, free and clear so that if we needed to potentially queue some cars up, we could. Again, that could be dictated by the detail officers on scene there. And I think with this model that we've provided, we'll be able to adapt on the fly as needed and it should not be an issue. Pretty confident in that and we do like the space and I think it'll lend itself to what the town is looking for.
Great, thank you. And I see that Interim Chief Jones and Lieutenant O'Shea are also on the line. So, thank you again to both of you for your help in bringing this to fruition and for being on the call tonight. I think at this point, I'd like to turn it over to my colleagues for additional questions or comments. Joe?
Thank you, Mary. And really thanks to the team that put this together. It's an urgent need. I got to tell you, the, when I drive down Route 53 and I see people waiting for three and a half or four hours waiting to get a COVID test in Norwell, I was convinced that Hingham residents deserve something better. And I think this is that something better. So, I'm really encouraged that we've got this opportunity and I'm looking forward to making this happen. Jackson, could you describe a little bit more about how the reservation process will work? How far in advance people can make a reservation? How that system hopefully is very easy for people to use?
Yes, I can. So, the, it's, it's, it's fairly basic as is intended, I believe. So, the, the registration will, is again easily accessible on our website at empathy.org/schedule. And individuals will then be able to see the option of going to, right now, the Brookline site or Hingham as two options. They'll select Hingham and then subsequent to that, they'll designate their resident or Town employee status or not and be displayed a calendar, which will allow them to select a date that they'd like to get tested. The most often date is today. And, and all of the available windows that are still eligible for scheduling, you know, we're accustomed to having, you know, five slots open for every 15. You know, we're accustomed to having, you know, five slots open for every 15 minutes. So it's a fairly high, high throughput site per 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 staff member that we have. And and then and then there'll be a screen that pops up that asks people for their their name and their email address and their contact number and and possibly a note if they'd like to leave one. And then they'll click schedule and they'll get an email confirming their appointment. And on our end, we'll have a scheduling system that'll allow us to to see those appointments and be prepared to deal with the incoming scheduled folks.
But how how far in advance can that reservation be made? So if I want to schedule something next week or two weeks, how can I do that? Or does it have to be within the next two or three days?
We have some flexibility on that. Right now, it's open for, you know, far in advance. And to add some additional color, you know, from our experience, typically people will mostly schedule either today or in the next few days with the exception of certain points in time when there's a large number of people traveling, such as before and around the holidays.
Sure.
Yep. The answer is far in advance, you can schedule far in advance.
If I make a reservation, can I cancel it?
You may. You can do so by clicking a link in your email or going back to the site.
Yep. I've got some questions about the site. I'm not sure who the right person would be to answer. When I, after I've gotten the test and I want to go onto Cushing Street, can I make a left or will I have to make a right? Is it option either way?
You can make a left or right out of that site.
Okay. And we're coming into winter and possible snow. Are there arrangements for snow removal so that there will be adequate parking at the site when there's a snowstorm?
Joe, I've been thinking about this. I've decided not to allow snow this year.
Okay, well, I'm all for that.
There is quite a bit of room at the at the rear of the parking lot. Now, some of that, the Hingham Rowing Association is moving trailers and things to the back there, but there should still be plenty of room for snow to be stored at the back of the parking lot.
Great. And Tom, with respect to the cost, you've covered the per day cost, but is there an upfront cost to the town?
There is, it's a $20,000 deposit just to ensure that they have the the means to to ramp up and hire their employees and get things rolling. That will be, that will be offset with our, as I understand it, right? Jackson, Michelle, with our weekly fees as we move forward.
That's correct.
And if there is a positive result, how will contact tracing work? Maybe that's a Susan Sarni question.
It likely is a Susan Sarni question. Jackson, you and I talked about it. Maybe if you want to mention what you're thinking and then we can hear what Susan wants us to do.
So what we had talked about and what we're prepared to do is to communicate with positive patients as soon as is practicable. So as soon as we get the result, that starts a timer for us to to let them know as soon as a clinician is available to do so. And the state will receive notification from the lab for any positive results as well with contact info. And they have a contact tracing program too. And and I'll let I'll let Susan, and then lastly, the, you know, we can provide the the health our health counterparts, Susan, with a positives report daily to ensure that they have what they need to be able to do their contact tracing.
Add on to that, so Jackson's company, the lab, is going to upload the positive cases into Maven. That's the same software that I use for all our positive cases. And it can go either to the health, it goes to both the Health Department and the contact tracing with the state. I had I have a temporary employee to help with contact tracing starting on Monday. So we can take Jackson's report and be proactive and start to work through the isolation and quarantine guidance. And if we don't get to it, then the state will be able to do that too. So that's a great model that we can work on.
Right. Thank you.
Bill?
Question, either JR or Sergeant Kilroy, could you go back to the diagram again?
Yeah.
And so why is pulling that up? So Sergeant Kilroy, you you mentioned detail officer, so I imagine it's going to be two there the entire time?
Sir, I think it's it's wise, I spoke with the chief, you know, potentially start out with two officers and just to see how it goes. And see as is needed. And then obviously scale things back or adapt again on the fly as needed.
What are your thoughts? Is it going to be one, one of the officers be at the exit moving cars out and one at the entrance moving cars in? And the reason why I ask is, now, I've seen some of these, you know, these videos of testing sites on the news. And, you know, you just see like a a long, long line of cars looking to get in some of these facilities. And I'm just kind of nervous about backup onto Cushing and how that may impact traffic flow on that street. Would the officer be moving in and out or would they helping cars queue on the fence area or?
Yes, sir. So I think our our idea behind this is to minimize any backup on Cushing Street. So I believe an officer at the entrance in the exit would probably be optimal at the start of this. I also would like to have a mark unit out near the street as well, you know, for a presence. And, you know, when the lot's full, it's full. And so if people have to come back, we may need to do that just so that we don't have an excess of backup. And I think, you know, after speaking with Jackson, you know, I I trust his input and it seems as though it's worked in the past. I know that the other testing sites that are, you know, not necessarily by appointment, you do definitely see a lot of waiting and a lot of queuing. So we will have the staff available to minimize backups on the street and, you know, see to it that they're taken care of.
Well, it sounds like a good plan, Sergeant Kilroy, and I very much appreciate your your work as always.
Yes, sir, thank you.
If I if I could just circle back, Bill, just for a second to double down on something you just mentioned. We will be, so 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 much of this obviously will be brand new for the first couple of weeks. And the good news is that the CARES Act money will be able to fund all of the initial efforts we make through the end of December. So we'll be we'll be erring on the side of caution here, making sure that the area is safe, having the details we need, et cetera, and, you know, striping this this otherwise unstriped parking lot for this purpose. All of those costs will be borne by the CARES Act. And then once we have the data and we understand better, you know, what what's needed, then we'll be able to scale accordingly. You know, post post that first in the initial couple of weeks.
Mary, may I ask a question of Mr. Stone?
Oh, sure, Chair.
I I just wanted to confirm that if somebody does make a reservation, they should be able to pull that up on their phone if they have that capability. And the reason I'm asking is, my thought is that if the lot is full, the the detail officer at the entrance should be able to ask the driver as they pull in whether or not they have an appointment. If they have an appointment, they would be able to demonstrate that. And then they could either queue and wait for a parking space or just wait a few minutes because it, they're turning people over pretty quickly. So somebody should be leaving fairly quickly. But they'd be able to tell right then, if the person does not have an appointment, then they would be directed to the exit immediately, just to keep the flow of traffic moving.
The answer to your question is yes. They will have, they will have the ability to show an appointment that they received by email. They, yeah, so yes.
And Sergeant Kilroy, just to jump in here, I mean, I I don't want to play traffic person here. But, you know, we might want to just reserve, yeah, like, you know, 10 or 15 spots in the lot for people with appointments that would just assure that if you have an appointment, you can pull it and park. Because I think staying on schedule and especially with those scheduled appointments will make everybody's life easier. So, you know, I would ask you to think about whatever the number of of spots might be that are always available for people with appointments so that they're they're not turned away or they're not waiting on Cushing Street.
Good point, ma'am, yes, we can definitely look into that.
Bill, I think you had, did you have another question or a comment?
I just go briefly, another question or a comment. So, so Tom and Mr. Stone, you you mentioned the the financing structure at the beginning of your your presentation. And obviously through December 31st, we're good. You know, we're hopeful that the Congress is going to going to send some more CARES money our way. If it doesn't come our way, I'll tell you, $4,000 a day makes me a little nervous. Is that a typical or other municipalities doing the same type of agreement with these testing sites? It just, it does seem a lot to me simply because the participants are going to either pay out of pocket or it's going to be covered by insurance. So could you maybe speak to that a little more?
Yeah, I can, I can. You know, I can, I can tell you that the the town of Brookline, you know, only experienced those days which had under 25 participants over over the first, you know, soft launch period. So the first week, week to to week and a half, I think, was when that stopped. And more recently, you know, the past 14 days, let's say, I believe the majority were over the 75 person threshold. So hopefully, hopefully that gives some sense of data. You know, obviously, we're all hoping that the need for this goes down over time. And and as that goes down, this would, you know, potentially, if if people are getting tested less or asymptomatic people are getting tested less, the cost would go up. So that's correct.
And Bill, just just to thank you, Jackson, for that, just to back the back back it up a little bit. The contract allows us to cancel the contract and cancel the program with about seven days notice or so. And the idea there is we want this, we want to be using this as long as it's busy, as long as people need it. And that's why we structured it in a way that allows for it to, for the cost to decrease with with higher use. And also, we would be, you know, we would want to make sure that, so as soon as we start to see that happening, as soon as the decrease occurs, we would likely cancel the program and we wouldn't, we wouldn't, in other words, we're not going to be seeing, you know, two, three weeks in a row at $4,000 per day, that that isn't going to happen. But we would cancel before that happened.
Got to have the ability in the contract to cancel, so.
We do. Yes, we do.
All right, and lastly, just a quick comment. I want to thank everybody for their hard work. Joe and Tom, thank you, HPD, as always, you guys do a great job and JR. But now we're seeing Susan Sarni on the line. Susan, thank you for all you've done these last couple of months. You've really done a great job and we are indebted to you. Thank you for that. That's all I have, Mary, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think I think most of the questions have been, most of my questions have been answered. Like Joe, I I live very close to the Carwell up in up on 53 in Norwell. And, you know, it's it's routine to see 50 or 60 people waiting outside. I've seen posts on social media of Hingham residents, you know, looking to get a COVID test on a particular day or time for for any sort of particular requirement. And, you know, driving to Massa Sawyer at 6 o'clock in the morning and hoping that you're in line before, you know, before the line gets shut off and other things. So I I appreciate everybody's efforts on this. Like, like, like Tom said at the very beginning, I wish this wasn't necessary. But also just with with what we sort of seem to know right now about the vaccines and the timing of vaccines, it it seems like testing is going to be an important public service to be able to provide, you know, at at least for the next couple of months. So, so with that, I am going to open it up to questions and comments from the public. I'm going to ask that if when you're recognized, you could please state your name and address for the record. If if you could please direct your questions and comments to me as the chair, I will, I will then deflect them to the right person. But that just kind of helps with the with the efficacy of the meeting. So I'd like to recognize Mr. Mark Rockoff. You can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now, Mary?
We can, welcome, Mark.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. And first of all, I just would like to commend everyone in the town who's been involved with us for for the enormous effort to get this thing up and running. I think it's a terrific idea. It's coming just as the COVID surge on top of the surge is coming. And I I think it's a terrific idea. My only comment, and it's more of a question, is has there been any consideration to doing the testing outside instead of inside a building so that people can get tested directly in their cars? The reason I mention this is this, for example, is how Boston Children's Hospital has been doing testing up to over 300, up to 300 tests a day in in on the first floor of one of its, the hospital garages. You make your appointments online or you or you call up in advance. You just tell them what kind of car you're driving in and you put, they direct you to a parking spot. The people come out in their PPE, they test you right through the open window. And and then they direct you right out. I don't know how many spots are, might be available in Hingham. But for example, I was thinking of the commuter train station, which is covered, which might provide a facility. The advantages are it might be a safety feature because you are not congregating people together who might be positive and you reduce the risk of transmission by putting people inside a building, even one that's well ventilated. And you can also do all the testing faster. So that's my question, is that even possible? Has it been considered?
Thank you. Mr. Stone, would you like to respond?
Happy to. So I think it's a great question and it's something that we think about a lot in setting up our sites is how to maximize the overall safety of the site itself. You know, what I can say is that this particular location, you know, it it is well ventilated. But I think that perhaps doesn't quite underline enough the fact that it is a a wind tunnel essentially with an open garage door on one side. That's, I would estimate, maybe 20 feet tall by 20 feet wide and and the same on the other side. So I did want to mention that, but your point is well taken. You know, the 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 overall ventilation of a of a tent with 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 four open walls, you know, it's, it would be impossible to be more well ventilated than that. The, you know, the there are some challenges that in our experience in setting up sites come alongside, you know, testing in cars. There's there's an increased need for paying attention to the sort of risks that are more pedestrian. But in in terms of being able to walk around safely as staff, being able to coordinate potentially, you know, 30 to 40 cars in a line at once. And again, we have the capacity to have, you know, high enough throughput that if you have people coming, you know, 15 to 25 minutes early as they might, you could have 30 to 40 people on site at a time. So we're going to be using that parking lot. You know, that those are, those are my thoughts. And that's, I think, that that's the information I can provide with with my experience in running these sites. But I think it's it's a good point and something to consider.
Jackson, you run an indoor facility in Brookline, is that right?
That's correct. In Brookline, we're in the Health Department, 11 Pierce Street, in the basement with windows open and sort of fans in the windows helping to ventilate and doors open to make it a more open space in the environment. You know, actually, if you don't mind, I'll I'll say one more thing. It's very, very helpful. You know, we've, we've, we've been through this pandemic in the United States really from March through now. It's helpful to know in terms of our planning and operations that we will have shelter from the snow. Because the reality of New England winter is that it would be, I'm not sure we'd be able in the same sort of agreement and structure to be able to to really operate fully with the staff outside exposed to snow and wind. So that's, that's another factor that I think makes this attractive.
Thank you. I I'm going to recognize Carol Meyer from The Anchor who's phoning in. I understand from a text that she has a couple of questions. Carol, welcome.
Oh, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I missed the part about the $20,000 upfront, how that works. I thought there was an offset, but I missed that part.
Tom, could you maybe repeat that for Carol?
Sure. So that's a $20,000 deposit that Empathy requires. And that $20,000 will be submitted for reimbursement through the CARES Act. And the $20,000 will be offset through our weekly rates until it's used.
Okay. And then one other question. Thank you. Do you know when this will open? I mean, considering if it gets approval tonight by the selectmen, is there any idea when this would open roughly or?
Yep. So if approved, I'm sorry, Mary, do you want me to take it?
Please, please.
If approved tonight, it will be, we're anticipating opening late next week, Thursday or Friday, something like that.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yeah. And I would just add, Carol, and I see that Wheeler Copperwraith is on from the Patriot Ledger. I believe that the town has a press release that is ready to go. We obviously wanted to wait until tonight's meeting and a vote. But we will be prepared to forward information to the press tomorrow that will, you know, we appreciate your help in getting the word out and that should answer, I think, any other questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Mary, do you mind if I chime in there on the start date?
Please.
So, you know, we have a planned start date and we're, you know, if this is measures approved and we move forward, you know, we're gonna work on our side, having lined up staffing and resources to be able to deploy very, very quickly as we're used to. But we're gonna try to be as flexible as we can because, you know, the, you know, next week is gonna be feasible. But we just need to make sure if there are staffing shortages, we can be flexible. So we'll work together on that.
Yep. And I would just note from the materials the board received that the plan is that this testing facility would be open Monday through Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. So it'll be six days a week. Excellent. Anyone else with a question? Okay, you know, seeing none, we received a vote language earlier today. Bill or Joe, would either of you like to make a motion? Joe, maybe, since you've been spearheading this effort, maybe you could make the motion, please.
So before I do, Tom, is the version of the contract we have, is that subject to any further changes? You and I have discussed some. I just want to make sure that we know what we're voting on.
No, no, that's right. So I had to look at the person that knows and Michelle was shaking her head. So I believe the answer is no. As usual, nothing around here happens without Michelle's okay.
Do you want to discuss any further changes or?
We can. Yeah, if you wanted to make that, the change to that contract, Jackson and I have talked about that.
Right. So, I mean, it's really in anticipation of Bill's comment about the costs. So rather than doing, you know, a termination if demand is not what we expect, and I really think demand is gonna be over what we expect, that we would have the ability to shift it from six days a week down to four days a week, giving, make sure we give appropriate notice to Empathies so that, in fact, we can manage the town's bus. That would be the only change from the contract that's before us.
Okay. Joe, would you? Could you perhaps offer a motion? And I'm just looking through the terms and conditions to see if that would be an additional item or whether it could be folded into one of the items.
John is on the phone too, Mary. If you would like Mr. Coughlin's opinion on that.
Sure. John, if perhaps you could give us some guidance on where and how to incorporate that into the agreement?
Sure. I think it would be a new section. I think Joe's amendment would just be in addition to what's already there. So I think we would have the amendment give the town the option to reduce the number of days from six to four upon prior written notice from the town administrator to the licensee. And, you know, how many days' notice, I guess, Joe is the only thing we'd have to decide. Is it, you know, five, seven, 10, 14, whatever we want to do.
The only thing I'd ask is can we make it to as few as four? Because there's a possibility we want to move it to five, for instance.
Sure.
Okay. And in terms of a notice period, would this also be seven days? Or would there be a desire to have it be different?
Jackson, do you have a comfort level?
Seven days is fine with me if that's what we'd like to do.
Okay.
So?
So I'm item 21.
I'm sorry?
I'm just, I'm just looking in the agreement and it sounds to me like this is item number 21.
I think I would put it, I think I would put it in 15, Mary.
Okay, thank you.
I'll do it as another sentence in 15 that gives us seven days to terminate. We'll also do seven days to reduce the number of days from six to not less than four, you know, upon seven days' notice.
Okay.
And we can have that from the town administrator to Empathy. That way, there doesn't have to be another board vote if you want to, if you want to go that way.
That sounds great. Joe, anything else that you'd like to modify in the agreement?
No, I've reviewed it. I think it's appropriate for the town and I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please do.
So I would move to authorize the town administrator to sign the license agreement for a COVID-19 temporary testing site with Empathy LLC.
Any further discussion? All those in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Again, my thanks to everyone for this great effort. This, this is, this actually, I believe we had our first conversation with Mr. Stone a week ago. There's been an incredible amount of time invested by many people on this call to make this happen. And it's just one more thing to be proud of what the town of Hingham is doing during these very challenging times. So again, our thanks and let's all collectively hope that, let's collectively hope that the need for this facility goes away sooner than later. But it's good to know that this will be an additional resource for the community. So with that, I would just note that our board's next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, December 8th. The agenda will be posted tomorrow. And so with that being said, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Mary, I'll make, oh, you moved it already. I'll second the motion. And I also really want to preach, you know, send my appreciation for everyone who's really stepped up to make this happen. So thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
All those in favor of adjourning? Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Thank you again, everyone. Susan, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.